Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm going to call to order at 7:46 PM Woodstock's Planning and Zoning Commission Special Meeting. This is the 7:30 PM time scheduled one for June 4th, 2020. I'm going to call, I'm going to do a roll call real quick, but I'm just going to go through the names to make it easier. And tell me if you're here, even though I know you are, but Joe Ateletta. Blackmer. Sid Blodgett.
Here.
Gail Dickinson.
Here.
Nancy Frazier. No, Jeff Gordon here, Jeff Markcott.
Here.
David Morse.
Here.
Doug Porter.
Here.
Fred Rich.
There.
Dwight Reinowitz.
Here.
And Tim Young, I know is not here. I'll just ask one more time, Joe Ateletta, are you on? Nope, and Nancy Frazier? No, okay. So I will note that we have a quorum. I'm going to go through the meeting rules and guide. We are meeting via Zoom. I am going to ask that you mute. Otherwise, so we don't have background noise, otherwise I will mute you. So in case, if there is background noise, if you do wish to speak, you need to be recognized by the chair. I will separately state the rules of order for the public hearing again. Because we, this is a continuation of a public hearing, so the same rules from two weeks ago are applying. Otherwise, I do ask that if someone is speaking, please don't try to speak over or whatever. If there's any questions, certainly can direct them to me as a chair and we're happy to deal with that. I do ask that we do not use the group chat function. It's not an approved part of our meeting. This is, it will not be appropriate for people to be chatting amongst themselves or chatting to commissioners or think, or making what any statements otherwise or to the entire group via chat. So I asked not to, for you to do that unless you've, you needed to use the chat to flag me if I didn't recognize you. If you had a question or a comment. And for some reason Nancy is trying to get on, but she says she can't. I don't know why. I don't know where the, how to get her on. But I can't get off mute, she says. All right. So I'll see if she can get in. Otherwise, if anyone has any questions and certainly can, you know, can ask and we'll go accordingly. Otherwise, the meeting, the meeting rules that we normally have to follow still apply. Delia, did you have a quick question about the meeting rules and guide?
No, I just had a quick comment. If you can tell Nancy about going to the town website, she could get to the link from there.
No, she's on, but she says she can't unmute herself and I don't see her on the list here to be able to unmute her.
Maybe she should call in on the phone then.
I've, I've mentioned it to her, so I'm trying to see if I can find if she's called in a different way. Did you have something, Doug?
Yes, I just have to recuse myself from the meeting.
Yep. And I was going to mention that when we got to the, our designations of alternates, but thank you, Doug. You're recused and we'll note that for purposes of the, of the meeting. So here we go. Joe, and I'll also note for the record that Joe Ateletta has now joined us. So can you hear us, Joe?
Yes, I can, and I see you talking to me, so thank you. I'm all set.
All right, good. So we'll note that then. Otherwise, for designation of alternates, we are going to need two alternates. Right now, we have one alternate present who I can see. So Dwight Reinowitz, I will seat you for the meeting. And I will note for the record that Dwight, you were seated at the last meeting when we had the start of the public hearing.
That's correct.
So, so everything is fine in, in that regard. So as far as the, my chairs report very quickly, the, the usual thank yous I give to you as commissioners and to staff. And I'm proud of my new mug that I got as a gift. Common sense, so I like the mug. Our meeting in two weeks, to let commissioners know, we do have a meeting in two weeks. It's a business meeting. We have a public hearing and some other items. If for some reason you can't attend, please let me know. We just want to make certain we can get a quorum for that meeting to attend to business. That does take us to public hearing. This is a continuation of the public hearing. This is number SP 6380222. Stephen G. and Lorraine E. Gabrielle, Lot 39F, Crystal Pond Road. This is a multifamily residential development special permit. There's a few things I do need to say for the record. Let me pull out my file. If I can find space on my desk. So I do need to note that we had some additional records. These were posted up on the Town Hall website. One is the Fire Marshal's final email dated March 16th. We have a letter from the Colmans that are dated May 23rd. We have meeting minutes of the Planning and Land Use Commission from May 14th, 1991. We have a, a letter from the Gabriellis dated, looks like dated May 29th. There is a petition or what is listed as a petition from the neighbors that's dated May 29th. There's an email that we have received from Cindy Downs dated May 21st. This was one of the documents we were not able to bring into the first part of the public hearing because it was not received in time for that meeting. There is a separate letter that is in the file from the Gabriellis. This is dated August 16th, 2017, but it's in the file. There's also a background information document about Lot 39F that's in the file. There's an email communication dated February 13th, 2020. That's in the file. There's also a separate document relating to set aside that was submitted. I will note that there was by mistake, a file put in which we have taken off. It, I think was in the meeting packet. It was a chart that Delia had provided, but it was put in by mistake, not by Delia, but it was put in by mistake. It's an old outdated chart. Somehow it seemed to get in by being attached to another file, but it's been removed. It's not something we are using for this public hearing. So if it was in your meeting packet, you can disregard it. And I will note for the record that the commission, and the commission is aware of this, that we do have a privileged attorney-client communication that to answer a question of the planning and zoning regarding, a question the planning and zoning had regarding set aside. That is a privileged document. Those are all the documents that I have, and again, I had checked and saw they were all posted, other than privileged documents are not posted. Other than that, I will remind people that if you have already spoken on this matter, separate from the applicant, but a member of the public, then you can be recognized to speak again only if you have something new to add. If you don't have anything new, you will not be recognized. And we will limit additional comments from members of the public to two minutes. If you have not spoken before, I'll take a look and see, then we can give you three minutes. Again, you need to speak to the matter at hand, which is the special permit public hearing, not to anything else that is not germane to the public hearing. I will also note that Nancy Frazier has now joined us. So I will note that to, for the record that she is here and I will seat her as an alternate. She did, she was seated for the first part of the public hearing. The other, and I'm going to, I'm going to state this. And hopefully I only have to state it once, but I will ask people, this is not to commissioners, but I will ask members of the public to not be making any types of allegations or anything regarding staff work or anything pertaining to the applicant. That, that type of stuff will not be tolerated. I'm not suggesting any of you are planning to do it. However, being mindful of our last meeting, I will state that, but we're not going to tolerate that. So, and we never do, so just wanted to have a reminder. I, I don't, I have a virtual gavel, so I don't have a gavel with me tonight. So what I will do is at this point, I will open it up to first, if there's anyone from the public, I will then pivot to commissioners. But first I will open it up to the public. I do ask that anybody who's speaking, including commissioners, please state your name for the record. For commissioners, please state your commissioner, so we have it on the record because we're required to, to do that. Is there a member of the public who wishes to be recognized? Okay, I will open it up to commissioners then.
No, I'm sorry.
I'm going to go ahead and just open it to commissioners right now, then I can.
Doctor Gordon, I'm sorry, I was on mute.
Yeah, just wait. Is there any commissioners that have any questions or comments, and I'll pivot back to the public? Nothing from commissioners? Okay, I'll open it back up to the public. Can you state your name for the record and then I'll see about recognizing you?
Yes, Michael Charette, 197, Crystal Pond Road.
I will note that you've spoken, I believe, last time, so do you have something new to add?
I do.
All right, you have, you do have two minutes, so please go ahead. Thank you for coming to the meeting.
Yeah, thank you. My questions or concerns revolve around the Woodstock Conservation Commission Report that was submitted back in March of, March 11th, 2020. And perhaps some of these recommendations or concerns that they listed in the report have been addressed. Specifically, things that come to mind are Note 4, as it relates to tile drains in the field. That's something that was commonly used in years ago for, in agriculture, agricultural fields. So I'd be interested if it was, if that's been looked into and if there are any tile drains. Note 7. They express concern related to the proposed septic system. Again, maybe there's been some changes as it relates to this report, specifically related to the 50-foot downslope separation distance between the septic system, leach fields, and a bio-retention structure for stormwater. I'd be interested in noting if, if, if that was looked into and corrected per their recommendation. In addition to that, Note 8, as it relates to vegetation, I can tell you that the lakefront, there's been some trees removed. So I'm not, I'm not really sure if that was done in parallel with wetlands, but it's definitely a concern. And it's a concern, Mr. Commissioner, for a lot of reasons. Crystal Pond is changing. We had water quality issues.
I'll just bring it back to wrap up, please.
Yes, I'm trying, sir. 2018, we had a breakout, we had a breakout of toxic cyanobacteria. We had actual clusters floating in the water. 2019, third party.
If you don't mind, sir, please wrap up at this point because it is beyond the.
So my, so my concern, Mr. Commissioner, is that the lake is changing. It's death by a thousand cuts. It's not one particular thing that could have a significant impact on the lake. It's, it's a combination of things.
Thank you.
Without the lake, without the lake, our property values are.
Right, thank you.
Destroyed, thank you.
Is there any other member of the public who wishes to speak?
Carla Charette, 197, Crystal Pond Road.
All right, again, I'm going to have to limit the time to your remarks. Do you have something new to add to?
I, I just have a question in regards to what happened with the 50% of the property for open space. That was my one question, and then I just want to make the statement that I have a right and that the pavilioning cabins would deprive me of the quiet enjoyment of my land. Thank you.
Thank you. As far as, I don't know, Attorney Roberts, did you want to? How to handle the question about the, the set aside, or how do we want to handle that question from, from?
I think the commission was going to handle that in their deliberations.
Okay. And so I think that probably would be the, the better place then for us to deliberate at that point in time then. Since we'll have to do that. Is there any other member of the public who wishes to speak? Separate from you, Mr. Gabriel, because you're the applicant. I will certainly recognize the applicant separately. I just want to make certain there isn't anybody I may be missing because some people aren't on video. Okay. I will open it up then to you, Mr. Gabriel as applicant. Did you have something you wish to say to bring this part of the public hearing?
Yes, sir, just some closing comments here. Although our proposal looks extraordinary at, on first glance, it really is not that much different than having several spare bedrooms under the same roof. Or having a camping trailer parked in the yard like some people do. These spare bedrooms are just under a different roof. That's really the simple difference there. The impacts on traffic and on the lake and the, and the number of visitors. That's independent of whether the guest houses or spare rooms are under different roofs or under the same roof as the main dwelling. The concerns that were expressed among neighbors with future use and potential misuse beyond what's permitted. I think that's adequately addressed in the zoning regulations. Without additional restrictions or conditions placed, no deed restrictions, that sort of thing. The regulations for the special permit will limit how we use it. And if a future change of use is ever wanted, there's a due process for that, for all interested parties to have a say in that. So I don't think we have to restrict future use. I think that's a deprivation of future due process. I think the only legitimate basis for approval and disapproval is based on state statute and town regulations. I think that's the standard here. This is a matter of principle, of rule of law. It's not a matter of passion or popularity. The presumption is, is in favor of individual property rights until they impinge upon the property rights of others, and that's what the regulations are designed to do, to limit that impact. We are within the regulations in, in all regards. We did not even want to step close to that out of respect for others' property rights while enjoying our property rights of sole dominion, quiet use and enjoyment, reasonable use. The petition that was filed is interesting. I was surprised by how few signatures, when compared to overwhelming public sentiment of the residents of Woodstock, which is expressed in the zoning regulations. There's a clear sentiment here that, to respect property rights within the limits that we are respecting here. So I just wanted to, I think it's a slippery slope when we start adding conditions or restrictions, because where does that stop? Should we not, should we put a restriction that we should never have a dog because it might bark someday? A restriction on what I plant in my garden because a neighbor might have allergies. And you know, you see the, the point there. In closing, I just want to say again, thank you to the commission for your time. I apologize that this is taking so much of your time. We worked diligently to stay within the rules, so this would not be contentious. And I'm, I, we did not expect the reaction that we got, so I apologize for that. And I especially want to thank the staff, Tina and Delia in particular. They, they helped us navigate the maze of regulations and the process issues while looking out for the town interests and just keeping us, you know, from straying where we shouldn't go. So I appreciate their help as well. That's all we have.
Thank you. Is there anything from commissioners? Anyone have any comments or questions from the commission point of view? I don't see anybody.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Commissioner Rich?
Okay, what's your question, Brad?
No question. I move to close the public hearing.
Oh, you're making a motion, okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, I'm sorry. So then is a motion made to close the public hearing? Is there a second?
A second at Commissioner Ateletta.
Okay. Discussion on the motion to close? Delia, did you have a question?
Was Jeff Markcott raising his hand? He, I saw him put his hand up a couple times.
I didn't see that he was, and he would tell me.
I was not. I was turning, turning my microphone on, Delia. Thank you.
Right. I saw that, Delia. Is there any discussion on the motion to close the public hearing? Hearing none. I'm going to go through the roll call here. Joe Ateletta?
Aye.
Sid Blodgett?
Aye.
Gail Dickinson?
She's muted.
Yes, let me ask her to unmute. Gail Dickinson?
Aye.
Nancy Frazier?
Aye.
Jeff Gordon, aye. Jeff Markcott?
Aye.
David Morse?
Aye.
Fred Rich?
Aye.
Dwight Reinowitz?
Aye.
I take that as the motion to close the public hearing passes. I will note for the record, the public hearing is done. That does take us to the next agenda item, which happens to be number SP 6380222. This is Stephen G. and Lorraine E. Gabrielle, Lot 39F, Crystal Pond Road. This is a multifamily residential development. And this is, at this point, we accept no further documents, no further public input because the, a public hearing is closed. I'll open it up to the commission. Normally when we are at this point, we entertain a motion to do something in order to kickstart discussion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, just, Chairman Ateletta moved to accept the application as presented.
Okay, is there a second to the motion?
Dave Morse.
Okay. Motion by Joe Ateletta, seconded by David Morse to approve the application as presented. I'll open it up to the commissioners. Any questions? Comments that commissioners have?
Chairman Gordon, yes. Just want to have a comment about putting conditions on the deed. I just want to make sure that we do get some memorialized information on this application about the current uses. I know it's being spelled out in the special application package, but I think it's important that on a document that survives years in the Town Hall, it's readily available to show what the current intention and plans are for this special permit.
Okay, Joe, and actually I'll ask Delia. If we approve this special permit as presented, certainly there's going to be the file or whatever. That would in and of itself memorialize it, and whatever is being requested is noted on the special permit because it's part of the plans, and anything that isn't being requested on the plans would therefore not be allowed, would have to require some future modification of a special permit. I want to make certain we address Joe's.
Yes, the, if it's approved, any applicable conditions would be printed on the MYLAR. There's also notice of special permit that details the approval, the location, the address, and the applicant. It gets filed on the land records, so that's filed in a separate place in the town clerk's vault. And also be in the minutes, so it would be in three places. And then we would have a legal notice in the newspaper as well.
Does that address your comment, Joe?
I guess it will, depending upon what the conditions are that are printed on the MYLAR, just.
It would be printed exactly as they're made in the minutes.
Then it's important to make sure that the minutes reflect all the conditions and not just the narrative about what the application's description is. It, it sounds like it, unless we put that whole narrative as the condition, and that's fine with me.
Okay. Now, does anyone have any comments or questions about that?
Yeah, I just have the same question I had last month, which is, is there anything in the special permit that would prohibit a home occupation being applied for, for an Airbnb for the use of the four guest houses?
Delia, I'll open up that to you, and in fact, I'll expand upon that because there was some further expansion two weeks ago about that, which is if they want to do an Airbnb, if they want to start setting up a home occupation, if they want to set up a, you know, some other business. If you want to reply to that, how that, how this.
There's a couple of questions rolled into that, so we'll break them up. The zoning regulations do not allow for the guest houses to be rented by anyone. So you cannot get a business permit to rent them out as an Airbnb or a bed and breakfast or an apartment or whatever. They're also not allowed to have kitchens, so no one can be putting a kitchen in. And it's a property like any other property in town. If they wanted to have a home occupation, other, they cannot do it for an Airbnb or a bed and breakfast, but they could apply for a home occupation like anyone else in town can. But it would not be allowed for that use.
Okay. Did that answer your questions, Gail?
Yes.
Okay, and Fred, you had a question?
Yes. More to Joe, what, what kind of stipulations are you talking about, other than the fact that it's a special, special? Excuse me, it's a special zoning thing, and there are already limits on that. What they can do with it, what they can't do with it.
If I can answer?
Yeah, go ahead, Joe.
Yes, Fred, I was just thinking about the narrative, the, the commentary that was submitted by the applicant that talks about their plans for the use of this land and the purpose of constructing the different buildings that are going on the land. And all of that is in narrative form, which is fine, but if, if that's what the commission is hearing, what the members of the public are hearing, and that's what we're approving, I just want to make sure that that type of information is maintained in an easily reported and visible manner. So a decade from now or longer, when somebody wants to do something different with the land, there is an easy document to say, well, this is what the applicants intended. This is what the special permit was approved for, and therefore let's not turn it into a different kind of use. And just having it approved as a special permit with the drawings doesn't always give the same flavor in the future as what we're hearing today.
That, that's true. However, if something else was going to be done, they would have to come back to the commission at the time, whoever was on the commission.
I understand that. It's just that I've not been on the commission as long as you, but long enough to see that some old drawings that come before the commission for approval of a new use of the land, sometimes it's not perfectly clear what the applicant's intentions were or the commission's decision was based on. So I'm just trying to provide enough clarity today for future commissioners who may have to address a different use of the land.
And again, Delia, we would have a way of, I think you answered this before, we would have a way of addressing, of addressing that as far as what is put on file?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to raise two quick items. One is, if I'm correct, Delia, the ENS control bond is being listed as, is it 8,108? Is that the number I found?
I'd have to look through the file and she have the document.
But I believe that's the number which is part of the application, so I just want to make certain we're aware of that. And I believe the Fire Marshal's concerns and questions seem to have all been answered based upon the final communication that the Fire Marshal had, that we, that we did get that, that copy of that email from back in March. And then to me, it would seem, the state did seem, was okay from DEEP regarding the special permit. The, the state did provide a document that we, we had two weeks ago for the, for the start of the public hearing. So the states, any of the states' concerns were addressed. And it would seem to me that looking through the plans and looking through the documents, things have been addressed from a conservation commission point of view. So I believe there's a number of those items, and in addition, the Northeast District Department of Public Health has given their approval. So they, they follow their own regulations that we don't have jurisdiction over, and they've issued their approval and didn't have any, any issues or additional items or conditions. They, they provided their. They provided their approval for the special permit as presented. So I just wanted to make certain we were, we continue to have that on the record for that. Delia?
Yes, I wanted to mention that I responded to everything in the conservation commission's report with my memo.
That's correct, and we did have a copy of that when we started the public hearing. And that is, that has already been noted and put into the, into the record. Is there any, does any commissioners have any further comments or discussions on the motion on the table? Delia, did you have something additional?
I didn't want to forget, you have to also certify the ENS plan. If you're going to make a motion to approve it, then you'd have to do that as well.
And we can, we can do that as a separate amendment, I mean, a separate motion. We can do that, or we can roll it into this approval, however the commission wishes to do it. So, but we can, we can do that. Although if we approve it, is it a problem? We can just make them, we can have a second motion to approve the, you're saying, Delia, the ENS control plan, which is already in the application.
Yes, you just have to approve it and not certify. You should probably mention in the motion that you're certifying it.
Well, Joe, you made the motion to approve this as presented. Do you want to handle it to say that we're approving the application as presented, including certifying the ENS control plan? Or do you want to have that as a separate motion that someone can make?
I'm comfortable including it in my motion.
And David, you, David Morse, you seconded the motion. Are you okay with that?
I am okay with that.
Okay. All right. Is there anything further on? Sid, and then Gail? Are you muted? I can't hear you, Sid.
Yeah, lucky you.
There you go.
I'm sorry about that. The open space issue, would you like that addressed in its current motion? Or?
We should, we should, as part of all of this, correct. We should have a discussion, and if included as part of the motion, we can. So if you, is there something you wanted to say about that? Sid, or?
No, I can put something together if you want me to give it a shot.
Whatever. If you wanted to, otherwise, I can, while you're doing that, I can recognize Gail and Delia.
Sure, okay.
Gail?
Yeah, I was just going to ask if we could, just for the sake of the neighbors who've been so concerned about this, add verbiage in the approval that, in keeping with our zoning regulations, the four approved guest houses shall not be rented or otherwise let out for remuneration.
That would be an additional part of the motion, or we can take that as a, I would take that, probably to make it easier, I would take that as a secondary motion.
I was going to say, as a friendly amendment to the motion.
We could, if.
Jeff, if I can address that, let's make it a secondary motion, please.
Yep, okay. So, Gail, you've made a secondary motion. Can you state that again? I just want to make certain we have it clear on the record, and I can write it down.
That as a, for clarification, in keeping with our zoning, current zoning regulations, the four approved guest houses, if we approve this, shall not be let out for remuneration.
Well, the four guest houses, you're saying, okay.
Right.
Are not to be rented, you said, for remuneration?
Let out, yeah.
Okay, I just want to make sure I have it written down here for the voting record for remuneration. Okay. Is there a second to that motion? Hearing no second, there is no motion. Delia, you had something?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify, the bond estimate was 8,108.
Oh, good, I got the number correct. So, Sid? Did you want to, did you have, did you wanted to cycle back to your, what you had mentioned about the set aside?
Sure. Based on advice from the town's attorney, conservation land will not be required to be set aside from lot 39F. Additionally, lot 39, currently owned by the New Roxbury Land Trust, neither meets nor contributes towards the open space requirements for lot 39F as required by the current zoning regulations.
Do you mind, you have that written down? Do you mind just reading that one more time, so that way we're all clear?
Sure.
What you're saying, if you don't mind?
No, not at all. Based on advice from the town's attorney, conservation land will not be required to be set aside from lot 39F. Additionally, lot 39, currently owned by the New Roxbury Land Trust, neither meets nor contributes towards the open space requirements for lot 39F as required by the current zoning regulations.
That was, which land trust, the New Roxbury, right, you said?
Right, yeah.
So let me just write this down, so I have it. You said neither meets nor contributes toward?
Right, the open space requirements for lot 39F.
Okay.
As, as required by the current zoning regulations.
Okay, I just want to make certain I got that all correct. Okay. Is that a statement you wanted in, or was that a motion you wanted? How did you want that? Or you wanted it more, and it's on the record?
I'd like that to be part of the motion.
But why don't we do that, then, as a secondary motion?
Sure.
If you don't mind, because it's just easier for us to handle it this way. Is there a second to Sid's motion?
I'll second that, but a little discussion.
Yes, oh, no, absolutely. I just want to make certain we have a second for the motion in order to discuss it. Otherwise, there's no motion that is valid. So we do have that motion on the table now. This is a secondary motion. Joe, did you have discussion, any commissioner discussion?
Yes, I just wanted, I just wanted to ask Attorney Roberts if he's comfortable with the language of that motion?
Attorney Roberts?
I, I'm comfortable with the first part of it, and I'm not uncomfortable with the second part of it.
Okay. Is there some different wording that would be better? Or if you're not uncomfortable with it, then that would be enough?
You're the commission.
Okay.
I'm comfortable with whatever you decide.
Okay. Does anyone, does anyone have any further discussion on this secondary motion?
Jeff?
David?
Fred Rich?
Aye.
Wait, Fred, David, then Fred.
Okay.
I am not particularly comfortable with the second part of that statement. I'm not sure we can, we have the authority to make that designation. It seems a little overreach at this time.
Okay, Fred, then Sid?
I think if you take that open space out of the original piece of the property, then we have no open space for this property that we're considering tonight. And I don't think that's right. I think out of the original piece, 50% of that piece has been put into open space, regardless of when, or how, or by whom. It's still 50% of that piece of land. I think what some people are asking is they want 75 or 80% open space. And I don't think that's right.
Sid, did you have your hand up?
To address Dave's point, the second part of that motion was to address what Mr. Gabriel's proposing, using somebody else's land that was cut out nearly 20 years ago as part of his application, to separate lot 39. It's not, he doesn't own it, it's not the application before us. Just why I wanted to be clear that what Mr. Gabriel's proposing, we really haven't thought through and debated, but it's kind of a moot point. To Fred's point, you know, similarly, it's a separate piece of land. It's not a piece of land that's currently before us. So I don't want 70 or 80% of Mr. Gabriel's property. We're simply saying we're not requiring any open space at this time.
Well, you can't go back 10 years from now and tell them you want part of the open space.
Absolutely not.
Well, that's what you're.
Could somebody go back 10 years ago and start recombining lots and making an argument that, you know, it's something that it isn't today? It's the premise of grandfathering. Things were decided on years ago, and they hold true. And can't be pulled into a current argument saying, well, you know, it used to be, or it was, or at one point in time. Much like that pond on Joy Road. Yeah, it was a field, but it's not today, it's a pond.
Now, if you've been by it lately, it may be a field again soon. But I still say that if 50% of that original piece has been set aside, it's open space and 50%. It goes with any piece of land that is subdivided off that original parcel.
Any other questions or comments on this secondary motion from commissioners? Jeff Marcott, you had your hand up? Sid, can you read the second part of it again, please? I'm just a little vague on it as well.
Okay. Second part is, says additionally, lot 39, currently owned by the New Roxbury Land Trust, neither meets nor contributes towards the open space requirements for lot 39F as currently required by the zoning regulations. So, we're not, the first part says, we're not requiring more open space from Mr. Gabriel. The second part is saying, we're not taking somebody else's land that was subdivided years ago in different ownership and having that be an open space requirement.
Did you have anything further on that, Jeff? Otherwise, I think Gail had her hand up, but.
No, no, it's, it clarifies it.
Okay. Gail, did you have something about this motion?
Just to make a point that this was not an application for a subdivision. This is a special permit, the open space requirements are different. So, because someone gave a piece of this subdivision, which was created in 1991, the open space doesn't really impact a special permit on another parcel. And while we're not requiring open space, I don't agree with Mr. Gabriel's argument that open space counts towards his parcel. I don't agree with Fred's argument to the same.
From my viewpoint, I think, given the advice we received, and Sid, you put this in the first sentence of your, of your motion, I think does cover us that we are not requiring any open space. You know, discussion about whether or not, what the prior open space counts towards, doesn't count for, what can or can be done regarding open space. At this point, you know, if we're, if the motion is not to require the open space, I do support that in that regard, given the circumstances that we're in. I know some people have some questions or concerns about the second sentence, and I want to make certain we hear from folks further, if they have commissioners, or if there's anything else from, from any other commissioner who's raised a question or concern about the second sentence. Not hearing any, then? Okay. So in which case, then, I will go through the roll for the secondary motion, which, if it were to be approved, would then be added to the main motion. And let me know if you're in favor or not in favor. Joe Adelata?
In favor.
Sid Blodgett?
In favor.
Gail Dickinson?
In favor.
Nancy Frazier?
Not in favor.
Jeff Gordon, not in favor. Jeff Marcott?
Not in favor.
David Morse?
Not in favor.
Fred Rich?
Not in favor.
Dwight Reinowitz?
Not in favor.
So based upon the vote tally, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, not in favor, and 3 in favor, it does not pass.
Hello, excuse me, Jeff?
Yeah?
Were there 4 in favor, Gail, Joe, Dwight, and myself?
No, I thought Dwight, did you say yes or no?
I was not in favor of it.
Sorry, my mistake, I apologize.
Yeah, I thought he said in favor.
That's fine.
I took it as not in favor, but thank you for clarifying, so we can make certain we got the vote the right way. I don't tend to make motions, but I would suggest that if we were to seem to be in favor of the first part of the, the first sentence, that if there were to be a secondary motion for just the first sentence, we could see where we stand with that. But I'll leave it up to what commissioners wish to do, because we still have to deal with this item. I'm going to.
I'll make favor of the first part of Sid's motion.
Can you restate the motion? It's getting very confusing.
I will in a second, but was there a second for the motion?
A second.
Who was that?
I'll second the motion.
Joe? Is that you, Joe? Okay. So I will read what I wrote down. Correct me if I'm wrong on this, Sid. Based upon advice from the town's attorney, conservation land will not be required to be set aside from lot 39F.
Right.
Okay. So let me just write this down. Okay, is there just further discussion on this motion? Hearing none, I'll go through the roll, then. Joe Adelata?
In favor.
Sid Blodgett?
In favor.
Gail Dickinson?
Not in favor.
Nancy Frazier?
In favor.
Jeff Gordon, in favor. Jeff Marcott?
In favor.
David Morse?
In favor.
Fred Rich?
In favor.
Dwight Reinowitz?
In favor.
So based upon the vote tally, that does pass. That now becomes part of the main motion, which takes us now back to that being on the table, and that's where we're continuing our discussion, is the main motion as amended. Is there anything further from commissioners regarding the, the main motion? Okay. I'll go through.
Commissioner Rich, I move the motion.
Okay, I was gonna, I was gonna go right through the roll call, so. Actually, let me go back to the vote tally here, to the thing. So I'll ask if you're in favor or not in favor. The main motion is now approved, the special permit application as presented, certify the ENS control plans as presented, and based upon advice from the town's attorney, conservation land will not be required to be set aside from lot 39F. Joe Adelata?
Aye.
Sid Blodgett?
Aye.
Gail Dickinson?
Aye.
Nancy Frazier?
Aye.
Jeff Gordon? Aye. Jeff Marcott?
Aye.
David Morse?
Aye.
Fred Rich?
Aye.
Dwight Reinowitz?
Aye.
I take that, that it passes, and the motion is approved. Is there anything else on this from commissioners? As far as any further motion, additional motion? Otherwise, if not, that takes us to Agenda Item 7.
We're adjourned.
Okay, I think Fred already knew what that part of the meeting was then. Who's second, was that you, David? Okay. So the motion is to adjourn. Probably it's easier just to ask, is anybody opposed? I will take that, that that passes. I do note that the meeting is now adjourned as of 8:35 PM. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, everybody. I do appreciate the members of the public having attended our public hearing. I also want to thank the staff for all of your help with this. And as well, Mr. Gabriel, thank you for working through the process and working with the commission on your application. Have a good night, everybody. We'll see you again in two weeks and stay safe and stay healthy, and I hope you enjoy the upcoming weekend.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Good night. Careful. Appreciate it.
Good night.
Take care.
I don't know, is Crystal still on? Otherwise I'll stop the recording and Tina or Delia, do you know how I, how we then get that recording to town hall? Does it automatically happen? I mean, how does that work? I couldn't hear you, Tina, so I have to unmute.
I don't know how you do it.
Let me see, it says, stop recording, stop cloud recording. So let me see what this.